Finally, you've been sued in the blood of the United States of America. Consider Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda look okay to everybody?
Make motion to approve the agenda.
Alright, first a second, second it. The agenda's approved, how about approve the amendments from October fourteenth, regular meeting?
So moved.
First, I'll second it, on favor, aye. Motion carries. Approve employee claims filed with the county auditor in the amount of one thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents.
I make motion to approve.
First, I'll second it, in favor, aye. Motion carries, approve claims filed with the county auditor in the amount of seven hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-six cents.
So moved.
Second, on favor, aye. Alright, we have the brain health proclamation. We'd like to make a proclamation that... For brain health.
I'd make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Okay, you had a first and second. Do you want to read it?
Hold on that first.
I think you'll vote on it first, okay, on favor, aye.
Whereas, brain health is critical to everyone's well-being, and whereas, the brain is an organ susceptible to disease and disorder, and whereas, awareness and education is pivotal into ending the stigma surrounding mental illness, and whereas, brain health issues are real and prevalent in our county, and whereas, with effective education and treatment, those individuals with brain health issues and all those who support them can work together for recovery in an environment free of stigma. Now therefore, we, the Cannon County Board of Supervisors, through here, but by can proclaim October twenty twenty-four as Brain Health Awareness Month.
Thank you. Alright, moving forward, approve custodial maintenance uniform policy. And, did you get a chance to look at that, John?
I did.
You see any additions or...?
I don't have any discussion order.
Oh yeah, we can discuss it.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Alright, I'll second it.
Discussion?
Any discussion?
None.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, I will, if those you could come to order.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Only one good question we have is, are you guys gonna order the shirts then, or?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, do we send the policy to the two custodial staff, or by you?
Uh, why don't you guys present it to them?
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, exactly, your first official duty.
Alright, here we go, items for discussion, place on file the following new management plans. B and K Pork Byron Township, Section Five. Brat Finisher Homer Township, Section Sixteen. Tower Pork Site One Madison, Section Twenty. Tower Pork Site Two Madison Township, Section Thirty-two. Red Barn Byron Township, Section Fifteen.
I'd make a motion to place it on file.
I will second it, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Well, we need to set up public hearing for the Russell Crest rezoning.
It's in here.
It's here.
Uh, what's the date?
I think it was November twelfth, at nine fifteen. Yep, November twelfth, nine fifteen.
If I connect the motion to set the public hearing for November twelfth at nine fifteen?
So moved.
My first, so second, and all in favor, aye. Now we have ten minutes, uh, before the rubber zoning class.
And hit the invoice, or the...
Yeah, let's go ahead and do the invoice, discuss foundation recovery systems invoice.
Well, copy of that was in your folder here.
Right.
For fourteen thousand five hundred nineteen dollars, where are we paying for it?
I would like to utilize ARPA funds, what's your thoughts there?
Well, what have we got left in there? They can't hear anything on the meeting, hang on a minute, let me switch gears.
Okay.
I'm... Want to say we have a little over two hundred thousand in there, but I know you guys sold two weeks ago of... Using some of that funding for the sheriff's department.
Right.
Two eighty-one.
Two eighty-one, well...
There is money in capital projects, but it's just gonna take out the capital projects that you guys have actually budgeted for, because... What's happening is you budget for certain projects, and you end up with all these other ones, and then the ones you budgeted for, you can't do.
Well, and I think, next thing... List was a hating thing too. That I thought capital projects would be better to have. My motion is to utilize the ARPA funds for the foundation recovery systems invoice. And as a side note, I did go down and inspected today, it looks true.
Hey, we'll second that motion.
Okay, so the next thing is, um...
Need a resolution?
Yeah, I have to do a resolution now. Because Precision Plumbing was in to finalize that other stuff, so I will be getting an invoice on that.
That was, um, our source system though here, right?
I don't know what you guys are doing down there. That's something to do with the sump pumps, that's all I know.
That is the plumbing.
Was it?
Yeah.
It was, it was part of this project, is what it was. So is that coming out of capital projects, is that coming out of ARPA?
I would, I would take... The plumbing charge for that, out of ARPA, and we'll use, because they did the spigot stew.
Yeah, that's already paid for.
Already paid for that one, okay.
How much did buzzy need for his...?
He didn't have everything yet.
Cameras, because I don't want to take, I don't want to, I want to make sure that, that water lever, police protected.
The initial quote from G-Tech was about a hundred seventy-six thousand.
Okay.
For the hair roller. Leads through that company, I don't know what the other quotes would be. I mean, he was checking with Bo Roller or somebody else.
Yeah, like, I think it was, like, leaning towards G-Tech, because that's what, because it interfaces with the computer system.
We have the same company for the laptops.
Alright, so we'll do ARPA funds for that. And... You made a motion to do ARPA funds?
Yes.
And I seconded it. And we'll also do that first, there's some plumbing, when the other, when that invoice comes in. Did you want to just wait until we get both the invoices in to do one resolution, Chris?
I'll have to do the one resolution now, because it has to include the amount, so we'll have to approve the other one, I'll have to do another resolution, because I don't have the exact amount, I mean, we had a quote.
Right, but we don't know if he's in the quote.
Correct.
Alright, okay, all in favor, aye. Here is. And, we can discuss the painting bid, or zoning, in Environmental Health Department. Amber?
I think it was out reaches. Um... I had another, I'll come out and... Supposed to give me a quote, but she never did, so...
Do you want to hold off until you follow up with her and see if we get another quote?
It's been two weeks. Three, so I'm not sure that she...
Painters are there.
So I'm not sure if she will get back to me or not, but it's fine, we can wait, definitely.
Well, I know he's done... Good work for us in the past, and...
Is it Walker again?
That's right here, it's for fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Are you trying to paint?
That is my understatement.
Labor and materials for painting zoning offices, all walls, two set, two coats, excludes ceiling.
Clayton set this up, so I assume that he handled all of that, but I can't tell you for sure. So if we want to postpone it, that's perfectly fine.
Do you want your walls painted?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I do, yeah.
And we can pay for that out of capital improvements.
Yeah. I would make a motion, go ahead and approve it, and let's get it done.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. This is so weird with the WICU people. Oh, okay. We have five minutes.
How long does Jason think he's gonna take?
Probably longer than five minutes.
That's probably accurate.
Okay.
Right.
Can we go to public comments?
We may go to public comments. Anybody have a comment? Alright, it's Monday, we're all real talkative.
I will ask one question.
Yeah.
Last Thursday, I was in town, coming out of Casey's down by Highway twenty, there was a semi with blades. It got on Highway twenty, went east, they were, they were cut up. And then I also got something from one of the wind energy people that last Friday night, it was dark, but there were several semis that went through Hudson with pieces of, of turbine blades, and with the state suing the one company over where there's, some of these blades that are distributed that were, that were supposedly, you know, Governor Reynolds had them clean up the Ellsworth site, the, the Grinnell site, and the Atlantic site, and then we find them, that they were distributed in places they shouldn't have been in Ohio, so, I, you know, who's monitoring any of this, do we know?
We don't, we're going... Down the same little town.
I don't know.
Is it down by Sullen? Where they're chewing them all up and making some byproduct out of it.
I thought they were gonna recycle.
It's based on Masonville, that's recycling them, the blades.
Yeah, I think, well, the...
The old elevator building thingy.
Yeah, I think...
Then they send them after their ground up there, and then they're sending it south.
These on, on Hudson were going north on Highway sixty-three, so... And, you know, because they're skeptical, they, they wonder, we're wondering why this was all being transported in, in the dark of the night, but...
You burying the lithium mine up in the...
Probably. But it just doesn't, it just doesn't seem like it's ever gonna end, is it?
No.
No.
Uh, well, the key is the... Seen them long, if you seen them cut up on the trucks, they're still outside that... I mean, when they went through town, and there was, like, probably two or three of them that went through town. Um, one day when I saw them, and, I mean, they're over, so at night, I think it would be rather dangerous.
Oh yeah.
They are moving them at night.
If you need, need to talk with them?
Yeah, yeah. Because they're overhanging the truck, they're wider than the truck, these pieces are.
You'd think they kind of smaller than that, but...
Well, they just kind of cut them in half, and then they shove the smaller pieces kind of just into the, the bigger piece, so that they can get them... Get them, because when they come, they're long, got the little golly on the end.
Watch them go through a roundabout, it's fun.
Oh yeah, that's what I said.
And did you see the Board of Supervisors, Clinton County, I can't believe the lady's name, but my wife posted, there was like forty pictures of the mechanics bills typed in.
She and the Jackson County Supervisor went over there to look at it, they saw that.
You're saying even the birds are grabbing the fiberglass, making nests on, so what's, the ramifications are...
I just, the ecological, they should scare the heck out of me.
Yes.
Because I could see their streams, waters, and food supply.
Well, I'm thinking Kevin's, we don't have, started on fire, it's bad enough with the combine fire, but this summer, with everything being so dry.
Oh yeah.
It's nine fifteen.
Alright, so... Nine fifteen, public hearing for Weber zoning rebus.
I'd make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second it, public hearing is not open. Amber? Throw this off?
So this is located in Section Seven of Westford Township. As you can see, it's just kind of off of Highway twenty there, on Benson Cheety Grove. What is outwinding blue is what we are looking to rezone, from A-one agricultural to A-two. Uh, this rezoning took place in May of this year. And yes, we are just now finally getting to Board of Supervisors approval, and that was on myself and Chad, that it was not presented sooner, um, than this. Um, and then, if you are familiar with that area, this is what it looks like now with the cattle confinement feeding lot area there. Um, that was established in two thousand and twenty-two.
It's pasture, right?
Yes, yes, yep. What were the CSR levels? With that ten percent, sixty-seven CSR, five percent, forty CSR, forty-seven percent, seventy-six CSR, eight percent, fifty-five CSR, twenty percent, fifty-two CSR, and ten percent, eighty-six CSR. Um, so again, generally, as you can see, um, the south portion has a little bit of that eighty-sixth, and then that seventy-six running through quite a bit of it. And I'm gonna touch on the NH-three tanks, the N-Hydras tanks, um, that the Eggvantage FS location has in place, um, so with those notated, um, so the one to the north side has a thirty thousand gallon tank, and then the one to the south has twenty-six thousand. Um, and then, just to kind of bring it up on an aerial side, those tanks are gonna be setting right there. They look like they're wanting to use two.
Plan on putting it, or is the exact location?
So they were looking to establish it right around in this location.
And the rest of it's gonna remain agricultural?
That is correct, yes. Um... Location wise, that is kind of where that higher CSR falls, um, which was a concern by one of the PNZ members. However, um, with the elevations and the way of the land, the farther north you go, um, it just kind of really drops off in there. So they would really have to, um, bring up the grade for the house. And... See here, we also had a concern, um, from one of the neighbors on tiling. So... When the foundation is that, if there is any tiling, um, the normal protocol is to reroute that then around the foundation, um, so that should not have any, um, concerns in the future. Um, and then, it was noted by Chad too, that when the Steinbrowns owned that, they actually used to let their cattle cross underneath the bridge, see that, kind of up towards that north portion there. I will note too, that with this meeting, I did take a phone call from, um, one of the individuals from the Eggvantage who had a concern, that did not mention this during the rezoning process, of having a house established so close to them. Um, and I said that the applicant is well aware during the spring and fall time, that they're burning the tanks off at night, he's well aware of their operation, um, and he doesn't have any concerns. It's just, as the way he understands it, it's part of the farm and rural living for that. The... Setbacks from the tanks to where that dwelling will be, um... I'm not sure if you guys got a copy of that, um, I believe it was a hundred feet distance is what we would need. Or that, I'm trying to figure out.
And the minimum lot area is gonna be met, right?
The minimum what?
Lot area?
That is correct. Um, so per Rob Van Pelt, um, who is at the Department of, Department of Inspections, um, currently with the residence, it would be twenty feet setback. Um, however, if Eggvantage decides to disperse any of that, then it would need to be a hundred feet from the tank to the residence. So that will definitely be met, um, the applicant is aware of that setback as well, and before the construction of the house, that would be something that I would check as part of that zoning permit, um, to make sure that where that location is, that it's gonna meet the setback for that. The other thing I can touch on is expansion wise for Eggvantage. When I spoke with, um, Chad Henning, he said that they do not have intentions to expand to the north, if they did, it would be to the east, which does not affect then the applicant as far as, as their dwelling. Um, also, the applicant's father, Ray, is here, um, if you guys have any questions, he's very familiar with this area as well.
Any, any questions, John?
Yeah, I have a big question.
Ray? Do you have anything to say about this?
Uh, no, it'd be far enough away from egg center, with the, the, south, uh, north, uh, far enough to establish CSR, as you said last week. They already have a driveway, pre-wired for spawning cattle shit, which takes up, makes that CSR, the highest, it puts CSR right now.
Okay.
And they just want to go further and further out to the north, so he would build, he would be off the road, yeah. He would use that same driveway that's already, that's there.
It's already in existence?
Yes, he won't put a new driveway, wouldn't apply for that, he would use the driveway that's already there. It's all about building the shelves, because the water, it falls off fast, so he's gotta, you know, that's why you don't want to go further to the north, because it just falls too fast.
Right.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, so he wants to stay up at top.
When I was reading through this, there was some, there... Something about a house needs to be sold before the construction.
So they do currently, yep. Well, they do currently live right here.
Okay.
And then that's what he's saying, will need to be sold before they can, that's what it should be one, yeah.
That's, that's...
And he was...
It almost sounded like it was on the same property, and I thought, I don't see a house.
Pretty much, yeah.
It's closed.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else to the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
First, I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Alright.
Public hearing's closed.
Motion to proceed.
I would like that.
I make a motion, we approve it and let them proceed with construction.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Best wishes.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Good luck with it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I think the last thing on the agenda is, um, IT. You're up, Jason.
Very concerned? Need to make smaller font.
I try.
I hand out magnifying glass.
So, previous board meeting, there was discussion about payments for the copiers being late, uh, the lease contracts, the maintenance contracts, et cetera. Uh, looking into it, the default time period for those contracts is forty-five days, so I'm not sure how Kyle Labor's contract was set for fifteen, but can be adjusted. The sales folks have been informed of that, to make that change. Looking into the numbers that I pulled from our Tyler system, uh, when I referenced the access systems company, Koch Brothers, Office Town, and TMA Laser Group, the numbers show that if we were to move to a consolidated, single contract through access systems, we'd save considerable amount of money for the company every year. Included in that change would be eleven new printers, uh, distributed amongst, let's see here... New copier for the attorney's office. Three new printers for the auditor's office, all color. Two new machines for community services. New printer for secondary roads, new printer for zoning, new printer for sheriff's office, and two new printers for the treasurer's office. Uh, the reason behind that, some machines that we currently have, either the parts are hard to come by, or it's not cost-effective to continue printing on them, based off of a newer model. So I had Nathan with Access Systems draft up a, essentially a quote, for what it would cost to move everything onto one plan. Uh, my intent is that the IT department pay for that plan. That way, there wouldn't be one bill, that way it wouldn't be separate from seven or eight different departments that, it's just not efficient.
How would that be pro-rated out to the departments then?
In what way?
Well, right now, they're paying their own.
Mm-hmm.
And it's budgeted that way, on their budget.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not in your budget.
Correct, yeah. My thought on that was, for the departments that fall under the general fund, to take the remaining dollar amount and migrate into the ITV budget. I have some more life work to do on that, I just wanted to make everyone aware of my thought process with all of those.
Don't get a true picture of what it's costing these departments, or to run.
And that's...
If everything's coming out, if everything's coming out of IT department.
Well, currently, we're not finding out how much internet usage different departments use either, as far as I'm aware. So, where do you draw the line? I mean, with this contract...
I guess I'm just going by what the Department of Management asks us to do, is what I'm going by.
Okay, so I did ask Nathan, the salesperson with Access Systems, is there a way to break it down, to see what everyone's utilizing? He said, if you were asked for that, we could determine that based off of the usage. So if someone's using twenty percent of the contract, uh, in theory, they would be utilizing twenty percent of the cost.
And that's kind of what I'm trying to add about this progression thing, about who's paying what for.
Yeah, however, I'd still have the IT department paying for the entire contract. So if you needed to know how much the attorney's office is using of it, we could see their print count utilized of the contract, and then equate that to the percentage of the cost of that contract, to know. But since that will fluctuate, it depends drastically. So the attorney's office could use one month twenty percent of the cost, and in the next month, use ten percent of the cost.
I understand where Chris is coming.
Mm-hmm.
That... In the accounting world, it'd be good to know that, and for budgeting purposes, I guess.
But if it's all budgeted under one?
It's all under one.
And it's one bill?
Mm-hmm.
One check? One payment?
Makes logical sense to me.
And it saves money. And it saves money.
Well, number one, and this is my concerns, and I'm not saying it's a bad deal by any means, I would just like a little more time to research this, and I do not have time until we get through the election. Um, I'm not sure where the figures come from.
They're all pulled from Tyler.
Okay. Um, but I do know, when we went through this a few years ago with the phone systems. That was, and maybe it does save a lot of cap and departments money, but my phones, my phone bill. And this doesn't include anything, my hotspot went from nine hundred eighty a year to over eighteen hundred a year. That's why I would like to make sure that all departments are on board with this, all numbers are accurate. That's just on the phone on my end.
You're still. The way the phone system worked and what was approved by the board at the time, to move forward with that, was we were paying. I want to make up numbers, cause I don't know the exact numbers. Thirty thousand a year for phone service, which included uh T one line, internet, and all the above, okay, thirty thousand. By moving to the new system, and let's say under that, your department was paying nine hundred dollars a month. Okay, moving to the new phone system, the overall cost for everything went from thirty thousand to twenty-eight thousand. But your department's cost went up. But maybe zoning went down. Or IT went down, somewhere that amount was absorbed, where we got that extra savings essentially. So we didn't need the T one line anymore as a service that we were paying a yearly fee for, but. That being as expensive as it was, was filtered down into the different departments. So in the end, the county saved theoretically two thousand dollars a year. But as a department, your cost. In your case went up.
It been doubled, yeah?
Yes. So similar to what I'm looking at with the contracts for the printers. What we're seeing right now is the attorney's office has spent sixty-some percent of their line item for. Printer maintenance and toner already. Into this year, we're seeing departments that are in some cases months late paying their bill. And that's not a fault on your office, that's that's totally on them, that's not on you, that's not on me, it's not on this board.
Yep.
Anybody else. What I'm trying to achieve with this change is to not only bring the cost down. Across the board, but also make it so we're not late on payments anymore. Or simplify it, so it's easier on your department to process it. And I'm not saying that you're overwhelmed or anything else, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to find more efficiency with our system.
Okay, so as department head, you said there was four new printers at my office, what printers are you replacing or what?
The printers in your office. Would be, I think it's on page two. It's ours that also didn't print. And um. Or, in your office, it would be, he just has it by IP address. Uh, the existing H P M four fifty-four D ends, so that might even be one of that one in your office. They're being replaced with Sharp M X C fifty-two eight Ps, all of them are color. So everything would be changed to just new printers that are color. And when I asked him why that would be, he said that the H P M four fifty-fours. Uh, probably cost us under a thousand dollars at the time, and you get what you pay for. Uh, the parts for them are a little harder to come by, and their efficiency when printing is not very good. So included in this. Quote that he gave us is to replace three of those machines with brand new ones. Though we also have. Uh, the attorney's office would get a brand new copier, he said that considering the amount of work that that machine is under, the load. It's being way overused for what was intended for. So he would like to put in a different copier, which is all these are included in the quote he gave us. Um, and as you go down, different printers are highlighted in bold, so zoning. There's one, two in community services. Yes, the H P M, I just give you a copy here.
Would that be in people's offices?
I believe so, it's mainly targeted at the smaller units.
We don't need to replace two.
He just. Then discuss, I saw him get a count on all machines, put it all in one contract, so we don't have to. Piece meal out everything.
Don't, I wouldn't make any changes at my office right now.
Okay. That's fine.
But if you're gonna, if you're going with it, I would go with one, but. Um, make sure you check before you do anything.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna discuss it more.
Jason, down the road, that will. Reduce the number of different printer. Cartridge, uh, toner. Replacements that we have to have on hand.
Well, and, yes, quite a bit, we wouldn't need toner on hand. Uh, what he would like to implement is what we already have on our print server. Uh, it's a piece of software that monitors the printers, if we get everything under the contract, we can open that up to just monitor all the printers. Doesn't monitor what's actually being printed, just that something has been printed, and it just keeps count of those prints. And when it detects, I believe, five to ten percent remaining on the toner. It will auto order the toner and ship it to us, so we just always have toner as we needed.
That's great, as long as they have it in stock, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
If you're into that problem.
Elect marks, yeah.
Yeah.
A child labor, what can you do, right? So, yeah, that's what I'd like to do with it, I know there is some details that need ironed out, uh. And I understand there's an election going on, my original plan ended up, even went down to my office and looked at my dry erase board, I was gonna bring this up in December. Yeah, during the budget seasons, just to see what could be changed for the next fiscal year. Uh, well, what's gonna push this much faster is the different issues with the bills being, need to be paid on time.
And twenty dollars with late fees?
Late fees and everything else, so that's why I've been pushing this now instead of waiting till December.
So who still has, um, who still has Koch Brothers doing theirs?
Maybe a Cessar's office? I'd have to double check. Somebody still has a Koch Brothers machine, and I believe it's paid off, it was bought out already, there's payment and maintenance contract on it. Yeah.
I think this is worth considering, and we'll let Chris. Dive into it after we get through the election and. Bring this back up maybe in December or whenever.
You know. That's fine.
And that will get Clayton's input also.
Well, I think each department head needs to be contacted regarding the proposed change in their printers and. If that's the route, without we go.
Julie, is part of your concern because of the reorganization or that?
Well, know more about that.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna put new ones in that we won't be, well, there won't be anybody here to support, yeah. And I don't know with the one that we have right now, um, Patty wouldn't need one that size if. Just her, because with. The. The reorg, you know, we don't know, so.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
So in the interim, did we get? Are they doing forty-five days for the other two departments?
I believe so, yes, yeah, I requested actually sixty days, and he said the default's forty-five.
Why didn't they get down to fifteen?
I have no idea.
Because they didn't read their their contract when they read it, very simple.
Anyway, um.
We had that happen a few years back with, um, we leased. Copiers. With um, Lee Financial. And all the contracts got signed, but there was fine print that stated that increase every year, so after a year. Everybody's bill went up. And after I sent it to the county attorney to figure out what was going on, that's what it was, it was the fine print. So it just didn't get read.
Starting the other thing.
Yep.
Alright, thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason, appreciate it. Is there anything else for the other cause?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it, on favor.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.